Okay. All right, time being 7:07, we are a little tardy. I call the Hastings City Council to meeting and a full council is here. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and tonight we have an exciting evening. We have a couple presentations with us. And first off, we will have Kristi Barsh from the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau give us an update on what she and our city has been doing for the past year. Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you. Is this one on? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As Mayor Fassbender said, I am here to give an update on the Tourism Bureau, particularly this last year, and then give an overview of our marketing plan for this next year to come. So just a quick overview of who our Tourism Committee makeup is. We meet six times a year, and we try our best to make sure that there's a good mix of our lodging community on there. So we have a representative from the Confluence Hotel, Nichols Hotel, The Suite Experience as part of the committee. Jen Veeth from Carpenter Nature Center is a representative. We have Barb Hollenbach, who keeps us up to date on what the Arts and Culture Commission is doing and also provides us updates on downtown retail. Jen Fox is representing our local brewery, Spiral Brewery, and then also can give us some City Council updates. Nicole Sindelar keeps us abreast on what's happening in the Gulf world. And then our city representation is Don Skelly with Communications and Chris Jenkins. So again, we meet about six times a year, and we really rely on the insight from this committee so that we know what is coming up and what we can promote, and make sure that our materials are up to date and we're putting together packages that make sense for our visitors. A quick tourism financial overview, so most of you will remember this from previous years, but our bureau is funded through a 3% lodging tax that is collected from our local hotels. Just as a reminder, that 3% is the max that we are allowed to tax in the state of Minnesota. The Tourism Bureau receives 95% of that to run the Visit Hastings, and the funds must be used for marketing and promoting the city as a tourist destination. I just, I like to bring that up because oftentimes we will get recommendations for signage or new art projects, and really, per the state statute, we have to make sure that these funds go towards, towards marketing material. I'd like to do a six-year look back on the lodging tax, just because it's good to see how COVID impacted that. But here's how things have been since 2018. As you can see, we were, we were bringing in just under $60,000 prior to the hit of the pandemic, and then took that, that big dip in 2019 up to 2021. And then we've been increasing. I think it's pretty remarkable that this last year, we saw a 30% increase in our lodging tax. Typically, we see anywhere from 5% to 7%, and we know that that is because of the Confluence Hotel. But the, for reference, the Confluence Hotel opened and started renting out to rooms in November, so it, it's been just about a full year since they have been open. So pretty remarkable increase in that lodging tax for us. And they're bringing in some, some amazing groups that are wanting to return, I'm hearing. So their corporate, their corporate business has been very successful along with the weddings. Just a brief overview of kind of the breakdown of how those funds are used. So because tourism, or visitors plan their trips differently, they, we have to make sure that we're doing a different mix of marketing. I know that's really hard to see. But we invest in print advertising along with online ads and dedicated email blasts and then social media. So those are, that's kind of the way that our buckets are broken down. If you look at the blue, we're investing a good portion of those funds into online ads and targeted emails. We like to split our markets in two, so we have a market that's really focused on our daytrippers in Twin Cities area. Our Google Analytics still show that Minneapolis is the top community that visits our, our website. So we want to make sure that we're marketing to people that are already interested. So we take a portion of those funds and it goes towards the Twin Cities. And then, if you can remember from last year, we are expanding into the Midwest. So prior to COVID-19, we were really focused on getting over this perception that Hastings is so far away from the Twin Cities, and so we had a tagline called "Get Away to Someplace Close." And we were really focused on the Twin Cities market within Minnesota. And now that we're starting to see more of those visitors, and that's growing, we are expanding that into the Midwest. So this year, we were able to take out this fall a targeted email campaign that went to some of the larger cities in the Midwest, like Des Moines and Chicago and some of those other larger cities outside of Minnesota. Okay, so some tracking metrics. We use our lodging tax as an indicator of how well our marketing is doing, but we know that there are multiple wedding venues around our area, and so it's just organically going to bring people over weekend traffic. So we like to make sure that we're tracking in other ways. And I, I'm proud to say that in the last year, our number of requests for Visitors Guides has doubled from the previous year, which is pretty incredible. We do pay to have our Tourism Guide, which I have copies for everyone. We do pay to have them in some really high tourist areas, like the Mall of America and the airport. And this year, we had four requests from them to send, to send more. I think we sent over 3,000, which is, is pretty incredible. So we know that our marketing is working. And then we also track it through, this is why we like the online campaigns. We're able to see how many people are opening our emails, how many people are clicking through to the lodging, and where they're coming from. So, excuse me. Those Google Analytics has, have continued to increase, which, with each campaign that we have done. And then we just keep track of word of mouth. We hear from our tourism-based businesses, and that's where the committee comes in handy. When we do a specific campaign on our, our golf packages, we want to make sure that they're working, and we want to hear from our golf courses to say that people are booking. Okay, some fun things. If you remember, last year, we had piloted what we're calling Step On Tours. So we had an increase of visitors coming in, in a bus that wanted to come to Hastings, and they wanted a specific historic tour with a guide. So Dave Youngren in our office would help them plan that tour. He would give them options for, for lunch, and then when their bus came by the Tourism Office, he would step on and give them a historic tour of either downtown, City Hall, or the Le Duke. And those became really popular. So we had five of them this summer. I think he's got one more. And it's actually become something that we're able to monetize. It's not a huge moneymaker for us, but he is spending his time on it, and we're, we're finding that these groups are willing to pay for it. It's been a huge value add for the corporate groups that come to Confluence that want different experiences. So I see that only continuing to grow. One thing we're hoping to complete this year in partnership with the Arts and Council Commission is a public art tour. Our historic walking tour that is interactive on our website and that also is on the back of our city map has been extremely popular. And so we want to broaden that with a public art tour. And so there'll be markers on this same map where people that are interested in the murals or they're interested in some of the statues downtown can hover over it and get some of the history on that. And then we are working with the Confluence Hotel on creating scavenger hunts. Again, their, their groups are really wanting some additional experiences, and we don't want to impede on what the private sector is already doing. So it's been nice to have the Port of Hastings there to give bike tours as something that they can offer as a package. But some of these other things that we can just implement and recreate year after year is something that we have the information to do and can easily be implemented. Okay, so looking ahead to the next year, not a significant amount of changes. We are hearing from our lodging community that our, our target on multi-generational travel and corporate retreats is working. So we're going to continue to, to push in those markets. We are going to continue to do seasonal targeted online campaigns. So we do one for winter, we do one for summer, and we do one for fall. And we are going to, hopefully, I don't have all of the results from our fall campaign, but we're hoping to do the same Midwest large cities as we did this last year. And again, we'll tweak that once I get all of the results from, from this, this last year. We're going to do the, the print advertising focusing on our bike trails. So we do, we work through AAA, our Bike and Hike Magazine, and the St. Croix Valley Magazine. With our increased budget, we're going to be able to do some additional ads. One is our Travel Taste &amp; Tour. They have a specific, they have a specific addition that's focused on hidden gems, which is small towns. So we have a two-page ad that we're going to be able to invest in that, and that goes all over the U.S. And then we'll recreate our events. We'll have Rivertown Days again, our Hastings Prescott Bike Tour, and then continue to sponsor our tourism-based events with the Downtown Business Association. Okay, so that's all I have. I do have the Visitors Guide. The 2025 is going to print right now, but I have last year's and the bike tour. And then happy to answer any questions on, on the marketing plan or finances.
Sure. Thanks, Kristi. Always a pleasure to hear what's going on, that we hear the uptick of tourism in our community, which I think is great. I personally enjoy driving into the downtown area or other areas of town that I can see bike racks on the back of their cars, and their bikes aren't there. So I'm assuming they're out on the trails.
Right.
You know, in Hastings. And even just being out and about, I will stop and say, hey, thanks for coming to Hastings. Where are you from? I mean, new hope. I mean, just, they were here for a wedding at the Confluence, and they thought they'd come down for a weekend. I mean, I love to hear those stories. But you guys do a great job with that, and I think futuristically, I think it's just going to get better and better. So thank you. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kristi, it sounds like you guys have a great group that's working really hard on all of these events, which I'm very, very grateful for. I love to see the six-year map that you had as well. I love to see this every year and the growth that it's, that has come with it. So also diversifying kind of the experiences that you guys have for the Tourism Board is really awesome to see, kind of opening up new ways. So great job overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to go on public record and say that this is my favorite committee that I'm on. Which I tell Kristi all the time, you work so diligently in, in being in an industry where I have business partners like all throughout the, the Twin Cities and Minnesota and into Wisconsin. I, I'm able to like talk up our, our chamber, and there are no other chambers like ours. We are so fortunate. We're so blessed to have our team who makes our downtown and Hastings businesses thrive. So thank you for all of your work. And, and the tourism piece is so unique to our community. We have amazing hotel experiences, including The Suite that Judith and David run. But just so grateful for all of your hard work and diligence in promoting our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Pimble.
First off, Kristi, thanks for all you and Dave do. That's what we need, tourism. We need people coming and visiting our community. One question I have is tomorrow, the county's having the final deal. Are you going to be there?
I am.
Or is Dave going to be there?
Yes.
And make sure you have something to hand out.
Absolutely, yes. So what Councilmember Pimble is talking about is the ribbon cutting for the final Mississippi Greenway Trail. So there has been a two-mile section that we have been waiting on for, I don't know, a long time.
Yes.
But, yes, so it will connect Hastings to St. Paul. It's a really big deal. And our bike trails have, every year I get up here, I actually was excited to say that the interest in history and public art has grown this past year, because every year I get up and talk about our bike trails over and over and over again, because people love them, and they still do. But this is going to bring a whole new crowd. So it's, it's a, it's a big deal. And I will be there.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimble. Councilmember Verichov.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it would be really difficult for me to probably say anything better than the, these incredibly well-put comments from my, my colleagues. But I did just want to add here, Kristi, that I was so impressed by all the statistics and the data that you put and the thought that went into this marketing plan, and I really appreciate you showing the different trends in terms of what came out of COVID and what we're thinking now, and especially forecasting what's going forward. I work in an industry that also has a lot of those demographics to take into consideration, and so I'm just really sensitive to that, and I'm just really impressed by all of this and just thankful for what you do, thankful for your time.
Thank you. And I will say, councilmembers, if you have any additional questions on finances, or if you wanted to see the analytics from any of these online campaigns, I would be happy to send them. So just shoot me an email.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Verichov. Councilmember Liefeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. Kristi, and in the lodging, you've got the hotels listed and then campgrounds and RVs. When it comes to that lodging tax, I know we talked about this in previous years when you've come to visit. Do Airbnbs, what all goes into that? Is that just our hotels?
It is. There's a certain level, and this may be something that I need to ask our city attorney to look into with me, but there's a certain level with the Airbnbs that you have to meet to be part of the lodging tax. And I don't know, because not all of our Airbnbs pay into it. And so that, there is a gray area there that I do need to.
There's some sort of criteria that maybe depending on how busy they are or something like that?
Right, or the platform they use to market. I know that the, the Airbnbs that do pay into the lodging tax use a certain platform called Evolve. And so that shows up on the, on the lodging tax, and so I know which Airbnbs those are. And I don't know why, I, yeah, I should, I should know that.
No, that's okay. That, that helps. I just was curious, because I know we, we've talked about the percentage before, but just kind of wondering, I know we're getting more and more Airbnbs. People are, you know, stepping into that.
We are, and I would love to market them.
Right, exactly.
I would love to have them on our lodging list.
There we go.
So, yes, and usually you don't get the tourism president up here saying that you want more taxes, right?
No, no, no.
But I would love to, to put them on the lodging list.
Just to reiterate what everyone has said, Kristi, you do such an awesome job and just such an active member in the community with your husband and your boys, and, you know, love to see you at the events. And that just means a lot. I mean, and all of us too. You know, we show up at this stuff because we want to show up at it, right? And it really means a lot when we see, you know, other people. So it's, keep up the great work. You're doing awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Liefeld. Thanks, Kristi. We hope to see you before next year. I know we'll see you before.
Right, well, come to the ribbon cutting tomorrow. It's a big deal.
I will be there. Yes, it's going to be awesome. And I just found out, because I had heard through the weekend that they don't even have part, pavement yet. They were paving it today. I said, well, they should be. They're doing the ribbon cutting tomorrow. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We should all be there. All right, thank you. And also tonight, we have an update from the Arts and Culture Commission, from the Chair of that Committee, Commission, Barb Hollenbach. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'd like to take this opportunity to give an update or a commission assessment, since we have been a little under two years as a commission. And I know when we were initiated into the city, if you want to say initiated, we have a two-year window that has a sunset clause. So I would like to present some information for your consideration and information so we can potentially make this permanent, because I feel it's been, brought a lot of value to the city and to our community members. So I'd like to kind of go through some of our challenges, opportunities, and what projects we've been working on and where we're headed into the future, assuming there will be a So a little bit of information or background, the Arts and Culture Commission was a result of HPAK's study, the Hastings as Arts Recommended in Arts and Culture Commission. The city then formed a task force, which I was a part of, to look into what kind of structure would, would work as the Art and Culture Commission. We did recommend a commission structure. We had various other models that we looked at, but felt the commission was the best avenue. And in doing that, we wrote our own ordinance, we wrote our own structure, organization. We have been seven volunteers from day one that have pretty much built the commission from the ground up, which is a great opportunity, because we get to kind of create it out of our community members, but also gives us some reason to pause, because there are a lot of structural things that we just don't know, and we kind of have to create them on the fly. So it seems like it's ever-evolving and changing, but that's kind of exciting, too. So some of our challenges have been, because we are a commission, we have to abide by the open meeting law, which means it's kind of, can be challenging for collaboration on projects, especially when it comes to document sharing. So we don't have a platform where we can document share and work on projects together. So we work in small groups of three or less to meet that criteria, the open meeting law. But it does present some challenges in, in, in going forward, working on projects. We just kind of work around it, and we just deal with it. Another, one of our, one of our interest, projects or problems that we encounter are document storage. So like when we create documents, if we're doing policies and procedures, any kind of, yeah, policy and procedures, communications, any kind of like our, how we want to organize and work on projects, we don't really have a place to store our documents. Or even if we did have a place to store them, how would we access them for future reference or just to put data in it so we can have, we can build that profile of what we've been working on in the past? And of course, since we are a commission, we have to use all the city's communication tools, which means Facebook and all the other social media. Everything has to go through the, the City Communications Department. And even this beautiful, wonderful graphic was designed by Dawn at the, at the Communications Department, which I think she did a fabulous job and absolutely loved the colors. But there again, we're building everything from the ground up, and it's, it's exciting and challenging and sometimes can be very frustrating. But we usually meet those obstacles and keep going. And one, one thing that I find, because I have been on a commission, I've been on planning commission for six years, I was on City Council for eight years, what I find a little, not unnerving, but a little challenging for me is, we're a city commission, but we don't feel really connected to the city. We have a staff liaison person who comes in and takes notes and meeting minutes, but other than that, we're still trying to find our groove with where we fit within the city and how we can work with other city departments to help them out solving issues. Like one example was Chris Jenkins, the Parks Director, had this very ugly electrical box, and he said, hey, can you hire an artist and paint it? And we hired Jesse Eckroed. We were able, and Jesse had a fabulous idea to make it into a community paint-a-thon or paint by number. So I, to me, that was, it's a really, it's a challenge and an opportunity to, to extend our skills into other city departments, but we don't know where that line is or that structure. So I'm hoping that as we go forward, we can build some of this in. We just, and like I said, it probably doesn't bother any of the other commissioners but me, because I'm used to that, that structure and that organization and the chain of command that we don't seem to have. But we'll get there. It's just, we're, we're, it's just all new and it's all growing. So, and I'm going to say one more thing of a challenge, as I see it, I feel adequate in my capabilities and organizational, organizational skills to carry out the mission of the Art and Culture Commission. But I do feel that your success at the commission is going to hinge on your strengths and your organizational strengths and your commit, community member-mindedness, if you want to say that, of your chair. I basically drive the bus. And because I have spent my past 30 years in Hastings, being on different organizations, I have a good pulse on the community, and I'm involved in the business community, the tourism committee. I have strong relationships with the city from my past experiences. So I feel like I bring a lot to the table on how to get stuff done, who to ask. But I can see in the future that that could be a challenge. And then also with, with that is, since we don't really have staff, is how do we transfer that knowledge to the future, to future leaders? We don't certainly want to try and reinvent the wheel every time we get new commissioners and especially the chair on how to think, heck, we just figured out how to pay vendors. So we don't want to have to go through that again. So that I feel is, it would be a challenge in the future, but I don't think it's anything that we can't work around. It's just something to be aware of. And I feel like I've been in, in other boards where somebody has left, and it's like, well, how do we do that now? And we certainly want to build that in, and that's kind of where it goes back to that document storage, how we can build that database up and that stash of information so that we have a paper trail or a record of where we've been and how we've accomplished things. So I know these are big things. These are things I think about all the time. I know not everybody does, but I do. So here I am. And also, but even given these challenges, it's the opportunities, it's the possibilities of the Art and Culture Commission that just keeps me revved and keeps me going and active and going, oh, isn't that a great idea? Let's do this. Let's, let's make this happen. So it's those possibilities. One of them, we heard of Kristi talking about the public art tour. I'm so excited to work on that project and being able to share that with the community, with the visitors, residents, to make that placemaking opportunities in different segments of our city. I, it just, it drives civic pride, it drives visitors, and it just makes our place really cool. And we like that. And so I think that is a great opportunity. I'm super excited with the possibility of growing our creative economy, the economic development aspect of the arts and the importance it is in our economy. I was able to facilitate, I don't know if facilitate is the right word, but bring together HPAK and Hedra for the possibility of them to lease the 213 Ramsey Street, which will become potentially art classes. And, but also, more importantly, it gives artists a job and creates a small, a small business incubator. So I'm super excited about that and that potential and that what that's going to bring to our downtown and create that cultural corridor. And we have the, then the bike trails, the historic tours, this, all the great stuff going on. It's just going to grow our economy and bring more visitors to Hastings. So that really, I think, is, is super exciting to hear. And then speaking of Hedra, Alex Menke, who voluntarily comes to our commission meetings, super excited for his advocacy and his enthusiasm and his understanding on how the arts can impact and drive economic development. So we're really happy to have Alex, and then he kind of fills in that, some of the staff questions that we have, like, how do you do that? And all these, so it was really, it's really great to have him there, and we, we certainly enjoy his presence, and we want to continue that. One other, one other one that I am so, so excited about is, I know we have the Highway 61 rebuild coming in a few years, and then the, how that can dovetail into the Vermillion Street Corridor in placemaking, where the Vermillion Street Corridor talks about, as you move through the corridor, you should have ways to make, know that the commuter or person on the corridor is in a certain segment through the corridor. And I feel that we have a voice, and we could make, we could make some impact in, in how that looks in a, like your midtown area is going to look different than your downtown. And we certainly would love to be at the table, giving some input on that, because I think, I think we could have some really good discussions. But there again, going back into how, what staff members do we work with, what departments? So I think we're, we're on board on to, to work on all this. Plus, our new Civic Arena mural coming down this year, we're working on. We find, our deadline for our proposals is October 25th. We got our first final muralist that submitted her paperwork today. I haven't looked at it, but all three muralists were very high quality, and we're excited to work with them. to work with them. But there again, that's going to be another kind of challenge on how that process evolves, who do we work with, how are we going to proceed in an orderly and on time fashion and budget wise, of course, too? So we have a lot of opportunities, challenges. I we've done some fabulous projects in the past. We've put some Dale Lewis art on the River Rock. We're going to also keep his river, his art this year. And because we really felt we wanted to keep his artwork, but also have the opportunity to work on other projects. And just doing that last year took a lot of time. So we want to keep his stuff. And then we worked on the electrical box this past year. The mural is going to be big. We held two creative convergences. And that's always a great opportunity to for everybody to get into the room and talk and foster collaboration. We had a city hall tour in January. So in our two years, I feel we've done a lot from where we started with nothing, basically building it from the ground up. And I do like this model. And I really would like and encourage the city to city council to keep us going because I think we bring value and we bring a different perspective to where we can to the different city departments without being, I don't want to step on anyone's toes or being out of place, but just to bring that different perspective and and our voice in different ways of looking at it and building our community and because our community deserves deserves the best and so do our visitors. And I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Barb. I'll I'll start off. I love the Arts and Culture Commission. I love seeing the people around town, the events you have. And we all know that art isn't just a statue of some sort, right? And that's what I love about your commission and you're starting to bring in different partners. The other night at the Convergent, the River Valley Band was there. I think that's awesome. I mean, those are wonderful partnerships that are only going to better the art and culture in our community. So I appreciate all you do. I'll take some other comments from council and I'm sure we will have further discussion. Councilmember Verachov.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much, Barb, for being here tonight. I had the pleasure of attending that convergence event last week. And I thought that it was wonderful to see lots of different folks that are volunteers in our community and that, of course, also see the incredible impact that arts can have on a community. And we know that that is part of of the rich essence of of Hastings. We know that there's lots that can be done here and that there has been lots that that you and your team have done. And I appreciated your honesty, laying out some of the challenges in the work that the commission has experienced so far. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but just if it if this is a question that can be answered now or even later. So you identified some of the things that I think you said might be helpful going forward. Is there like one particular, I don't know if there's necessarily a silver bullet or if there's you kind of said, here's like five challenges. Do you have a potential solution for what? Or do you have a recommendation or a specific request of council in terms of?
Well, the document document sharing is never going to happen with the open meeting laws. However, it could possibly go through a staff member. And if even if we and then document sharing and then the document storage, just to build that database. I don't know how that happens. I've asked the question several times and it's like, no, because all the departments, because we don't have a department, have their own system or own file, whatever architecture where they store their documents. We don't have that luxury to do that. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is and how to access that.
I completely understand. Is it okay for me to ask one more question, Mayor? Thank you. And so going back to the convergence last week, I thought that there was it was such a good synopsis on some of the things that were done over the summer. And so I'm wondering if that would make sense to possibly share with this council for maybe other folks that might not have necessarily had the opportunity to be there for that. I think that there was some great graphics that came out of that and some great statistics. And I also just wanted to name that I think that what the Arts and Culture Commission is experiencing is very, very normal in terms of, for lack of a better umbrella term for this, what nonprofits go through as they're starting up. I hope that there's lots of different ways that we can all brainstorm for the city to be able to help with that. But I do think that a lot of these are exactly what you stated, which are that we're what is the expression, we're building the plane as we're flying it. So yeah, but thank you for your time and for your honesty.
Thank you, Councilmember Verachov. Okay, Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Barb, it's such an honor to have you leading this commission. It's been really, really enlightening to see all of the different projects. I loved seeing the electrical box, paint by number by the community. I think each kid that I saw go up to that, each kid that I heard go up to that, I can't wait for 20 years down the line where they can go, I painted this part. I know I do that when I look at the mural that I helped out with in the high school at the high school. So seeing those memories be brought to life is really, really encouraging and I really hope we can continue on with your commission and keep pushing this forward. And I thank you for the leadership that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Your Honor. Barb, I just want to bring us back to like the initial conversation about why we wanted to create an Arts and Culture Commission. And Kathy knows this conversation started many, many, many years ago, but the the fascinating challenge and opportunity in this moment is that the reason we wanted to create something like this was so that the city always kept it at the forefront. What are we doing with how are we highlighting the arts? What are we what is our culture? Like, how do we build this thing? And it's a lens through which we start building our community around. So I think it is while it's frustrating as we're we're figuring out how it works, it also highlights the whole goal of it. And I really love that. And I know we talked about like investing in different ways. And I think this is this is a really great start. And I I hope to see the commission continue. I'm not sure, Your Honor, what that looks like administratively. Do we need to discuss it tonight?
It'd be good to hear the council's comments, you know, tonight and then maybe come together and try to figure out by the end of the year.
Because it's December 31st, correct?
We will need two meetings if we do pass an ordinance. So it's going to have to be sooner than later.
Just wanted to think about that out loud because we have like four meetings left in the year, I think, or something like that. Anywho, I love the work that we're doing and I'm excited to continue it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fox. Any other discussion, council? We will need to make a decision soon if we want to continue this commission. Again, it'll take two meetings to pass as an ordinance, so we have four left. Dan, may you?
Just procedurally, if all that is contemplated is taking away an expiration date and extending it, that's yes, it needs to be an ordinance, so yes, first and second reading, but it's relatively easy to do. It's just here's a sheet of paper saying cross out this date. But if there were additional changes to the form, I don't quite know what other than possibly my thoughts, not discussing with anybody else, but possibly taking out the expectation that there be a high school student representative of the commission in its two years of existence at one and then couldn't fill it the second time, maybe similar to a couple of other commissions have had trouble having a youth member, maybe it's easier to just remove that requirement. But point being, if you want to make changes besides just the date, that's the piece that we would have just some difficulty with, you know, hey, here's a draft. No, we don't like that. We need to make changes. That's where we start running out of meeting time. But if it's simply extending a date, that's that that's the easy piece.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. I think the question comes up now we start, we go back to the conversation of commission versus committee. No, is that not a not a conversation because that's what this was for years, right? And then we went with?
They are a commission.
Okay, so.
They are a commission.
And then who is the do we have the staff liaison?
Dan.
Because I know Jen is a council member, but do we have a staff person on?
Elizabeth.
We, no. The I'm really struggling to my memory. What was proposed two years ago was, and sorry if I oversimplified this or get it wrong, this commission is viewed itself or the task force viewed this commission as a bit more roll up the sleeves and volunteer and carry some more of the work, but did want, and we did budget to give some administrative staff support. So basically handling that minute taking, handling that document piece, just to make sure it sort of had that administrative, secretarial type support, but not not necessarily a day to day interaction with the overall operations of the city. I struggle with how to best frame that, but 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 a matter of having sort of the administrative support that was budgeted the past. I think the other piece of that was was envisioned was we might find somebody wanting just sort of a five hours a week, pay them a monthly stipend. Here's just somebody to to do that, but not necessarily be an hourly employee. I think there were some FMLA questions about how that could work, but that was what was proposed. We had a part time staff person who was willing to pick up a few extra hours and do that role for the past year and a half. But she has asked not to continue in that role. It doesn't really fit her schedule, quite her interests, appreciate her work with that, but it's not really quite her job duty to be doing that. So the past month or so, Alex Menke, our economic development coordinator, has been attending those meetings anyway, so he's going to pick up that minute taking, at least for the time being, through the end of the year. But I'm not sure that that will be the permanent staff administrative support or if we'll go back to finding an existing employee that maybe is part time and wants to pick up a few hours or needing to go find a new administrative employee entirely. But it's it's really, it's a few hours a week. It's it's not a job, but but it needs help. It does need somebody to fill that role.
So I think maybe my question wasn't correct. I guess far when we when we started all this, right? So we don't have a committee for this. We have a commission. And who can the commission take that to, right? Every other commission has.
Right.
A committee. There we go. Okay, now I'm on the same page. And I guess it would be beneficial, I mean, I'm going to absolutely support continuing this commission, but I don't want to just continue it without hearing what we could maybe do, right? What else could we do? So like Dan was saying, if it's, you know, changing the wording, if it what is it, what does it look like to you? So I'd be hesitant tonight to say, hey, let's just move this forward because I don't want to say, yeah, let's throw on, you know, two years, five years, six years, whatever. I think it'd be important for us to hear from from you guys, from the commission, and say, hey, these are the things that worked and this is what we'd like to do differently or whatever. Does that make sense to you, right? I just, yeah, I can't speak for everyone, but I'd be hard pressed to think that anyone's going to be like, no, we don't want to do this anymore. But I think it really would be helpful for you guys to present us with, you know, sure, we know what you're doing, we know what you're working on, great. How's it going? How are the real nuts and bolts? The public probably doesn't need to hear all that, right? But bring it to us to say, well, these are the things we'd like to see. Does that make sense, anyone? Seeing some head nodding? So, yeah, so I just don't know that it's something that I'd want to move forward tonight, but understand being aware of the time to be done by the end of the year. And I can't believe we only have like four more meetings left. That's horrible. So, okay. Thank you, Barb. Excellent job. Thank you.
Dan, I'll listen to you and then we'll go to Councilmember Pimble. In case that answers your question.
I just I want to in listening to Councilmember Leifeld's comments, I will certainly after this meeting forward a copy of the existing ordinance that created this. Some of the comments that I heard from Ms. Hollenbeck about how to transition, you know, as going from current commission members to next commission members, how do you transition some of that knowledge, maybe baked into the ordinance in terms of having staggered terms. But questions such as, how do we follow the open meeting law or document storage or staff support really are beyond the construct of the ordinance. I think that's more operational and it's not going to be something you write into the ordinance. But I'll certainly forward that to make sure that you guys all have a copy of it and can see it more top of mind what we're talking about when we speak of the commission. But with that, I also, great work. I got the microphone, so I give you a thumbs up.
Thanks, Dan. Councilmember Pimble.
Barb, I to me, it's like, I think it's an excellent added thing to our community. I mean, you you look around, some communities do have an Arts and Culture something, but here's a commission that they're at seven, you have seven active members and you meet regularly. And I was just reading over minutes that are published and talking about your activities. I think that, you know, wholeheartedly, everybody sitting at the Diaz here will support continuation of this commission. But from what you said to start with and looking at four or five different things that you have concerns about, I think we need to work through those before we process and just rubber stamp and say, yep, we're going to go ahead for another two years or whatever it is. Let's find out what we can do to fix a lot of these or work with your commission to make things workable between the city and the Arts and Culture Commission. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimble. All right, I think we have some notes, but Barb, as you can hear, we totally appreciate what you've done and futuristically what you will continue to do.
Thank you. Well, it's been my honor to guide this process. And it's been interesting, challenge for me, coming from using all my past experiences in creating this organization. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, are there any corrections to the regular meeting or the workshop from October 7? All right, comments from the audience at this time? We would hear comments from the audience. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the council at this time? And no one on Zoom. All right. Ideas to be considered, any ideas to be considered, council? Okay, consent agenda. I would accept a, oh, Councilmember Leifeld.
Your Honor, on consent agenda, I just wanted to say something on record. So what people don't hear every week or when we come into our meetings is we just approve the consent agenda unless something needs to be pulled off it that we want to discuss. I want the public to know that every single meeting, there are multiple donations from community members and local businesses who are donating money to the specific areas. And today, for instance, Parks and Recreation Department received a donation from a business in town. An individual donated money to the Parks and Recs Department, another individual to the Police Department. I just want people to know that that's a thing that people do and that is really awesome. And I saw a couple of names on here that I recognized and it sort of brought a tear to my eye on one of them. And it was like, you know what? This is really amazing and we just sort of fly right through it every meeting, but it's a really big deal. So for those that can do this, thank you so much, the Parks Department, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, we all thank you for this. So I just wanted to put that out there. And make a motion to approve the. And make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion on the table. And a second by Councilmember Fox. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Tonight, under Community Development, we have a resolution for the convey property to, convey property to HEDRA at 213 Ramsey Street, and we will have an update from our Community Development Director, John Hinsman. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Mayor, City Councilmembers, on the screen here is the property in question that is owned by the city, collectively known as 213 Ramsey Street. It includes half of the building over here, which is one parcel and three parcels within the parking lot itself. The parking lot, we do share with the walkers who own the other half of the building. What we're asking for tonight is the conveyance of this property from the city to HEDRA, the Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority. Really, the main purpose behind the differences in property holding between the City Council and HEDRA is, if we're looking at something that is long-term, we will have the city own the property. If it's something in which we anticipate a transfer, sale, redevelopment, that really falls into the realm of HEDRA. With this property in particular, the HRA, the predecessor of HEDRA, acquired it back, I think in 2006, or 1997, and then we were transferred it over to the city around 2006, 2008. At that time, we had a lease agreement with the school district to use the property. Since that school district lease expired the last couple of years, HEDRA has taken over the maintenance responsibilities of that building. We've put in some money into some of the roofing and some of the HVAC to the building. From HEDRA's standpoint, we're looking at this as a redevelopment piece. It's not on our real short-term list for redevelopment, but over the longer term, we see value in there. And as mentioned earlier, tonight, we're looking at a potential lease agreement for the space. So action I have before you in consideration is to transfer the property from the city to HEDRA, and I could stand for any questions.
Thanks, John. Counsel, any discussion? Okay, Councilmember Leifeld.
I'd make a motion to authorize the resolution to, for the conveyance of 213 Ramsey Street from the City of Hastings to HEDRA.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. And a second by Councilmember Fox. Additional or new discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Tonight, John will also be presenting to us a resolution to approve the Dakota County CDA to Administrator Laha Funds, which are the local affordable housing agency of Dakota County. You may continue.
Thank you. Mayor put together a summary of what we're asking for tonight. You may recall that in the last legislative session, property or sales tax revenue was allocated by the state specifically to cities within the metropolitan area, termed the Local Affordable Housing Aid Fund. Now, these funds come with certain restrictions for housing aid and those type of things. And we have a proposal tonight from the Dakota County Community Development Agency to administer those funds on our behalf. Now, the history that the city has had with the CDA has been a long one. We do not have a housing department within the city. We've really delegated those responsibilities to the CDA, and they've done a phenomenal job with the programs that they run, with the housing they provide, as well as the assistance that they provide to individuals. So we're proposing that we enter into a contract with, well, we enter into a, go back, we adopt a resolution that would lead to an agreement that would be signed in the future on this. This would be a three-year commitment. This is in order for the CDA to provide staffing for management of some of these programs, because some of the Laha Funds cannot be used directly for those administrative purposes. We are looking at a couple of different programs to help funding. One of them is an existing program. It is our Home Improvement Loan Program that CDA runs. This is what we use a lot of our CDVG funds for, and some other funding that they've had on our behalf. And this would increase the availability for housing loan funds for low-income to moderate-income individuals, up to about $35,000 would be paid back to that. The other one would be the Radon Assistance Program for radon testing. So what we're proposing tonight is our allocated funds for this year is about $114,000. Then we'd have 50% of that go towards the housing program, 25% go towards the radon program, and then 25% go in an undeclared pot that we could use for either or, depending on what would occur. This would be a three-year commitment. So what this does is this notifies the CDA of our interest to enter into an agreement, and that agreement would come in the near future. So that's what I have before you tonight. We did have a workshop on this with the CDA earlier this year, and we did take action at HEDRA at the last meeting, and they recommended unanimous approval of the resolution that we have before us. So I could stand for any questions.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Pimble.
John, I would wholeheartedly think that this is the best way to go. The two items here, I mean, and we interjecting that at the time of the sale of a property that had received the funds, then that amount comes back, correct?
Right. There is an allocated amount, an allocated fund, council member, in which funds that are, the City of Hastings will stay allocated to the City of Hastings.
Thank you. And the other one for the radon, I mean, we're in a hot zone for radon here, and so it's really important, I feel, that we stay after that, and here's some funds to help do that. And with that, I'll make a motion to build this resolution with the CDA for Laha Funds and to go for these two projects.
Thank you, Councilmember Pimble.
I'll second the motion with a comment.
And discussion, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you. I was going to point that out as well, Councilmember Pimble. We both sit on HEDRA, so we were part of that robust discussion about what to do with the Laha Funds and why Dakota County CDA is the best arbiter of them. They are our funds, they will stay our funds, we will spend them how we see fit through their administration. So one other thing we discussed in that meeting was that there will be some strategic marketing around them as well. And that was really important to both of us as well, because I think folks don't know that much about radon and how to get it tested, and how to get it fixed, and what that looks like. So I'm glad to see this resolution go through.
Okay, there is a first and a second. New discussion, counsel? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you, John. Tonight, under administration, we will have a PFAS update by our city administrator, Dan Maticia. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Our plan, in real simple terms, has been to build one treatment plant per year for three years. And obviously, it takes time. We've been working towards that and much engineering towards getting that started, but it would get us done by the deadline of early 2029. We had intended for the, or we do technically, I still do intend, the first plant to be the eastern plant, the one in the industrial park. The engineering is well underway for that. We are anticipating going out for bids in early 2025, and in order to do that, we're looking at, and in our proposed budget, which will be voting in a few weeks here, is a 37.3% water rate increase the first of the year. That's what we've been planning, and it will work. But we had some really good, interesting news just a couple of weeks ago, right before our last council meeting, and not really even time to work with it. But recommendation is, let's change our plan. Instead of starting with the eastern plant, let's start with the central plant, the one located off the North Frontage Road area. That does a couple of things. One, it, because it has significant funding coming through the 3M settlement towards it, it means a lesser water rate increase. So instead of 37.3%, we'd be looking at something less, and I'll get to that in a second. The other advantage that it has is it gives us time to look for more funding for the other plants. So if right now, we don't have, we got an application out there for some grant funding, we had a very good conversation with the Chair of the Senate Capital Investment Committee last week, so there's possibly some other state funding that could come towards Plant One, or the eastern plant, but we don't have that funding lined up. We're looking at a rate increase to cover that entirely. If it was delayed a year, we have more time to look for that funding and see where that could come in, and have the rate increases more in line with what's actually needed to fill some gaps. So some advantages to changing the sequence of the projects. One, it means a lesser rate increase. It also means we've got more, or initial rate increase, we're looking at several years, but it also gives us time to look for additional funding. The second recommendation I have tonight is that rate increase. It's less than 37%, but I honestly don't know what that number is right now. I think it's around 20% to 22%, but just the way that the funding would work through the settlement funds, we can't even apply for that funding until the engineering's about 60% done. We weren't planning on building this plant yet for another year, year and a half, so we haven't started that engineering. So, yeah, we have an estimate, but it hasn't been submitted or reviewed by the Pollution Control Agency, so it's sort of an estimate on top of an estimate. I think it's a pretty accurate number, but it's not final. So second recommendation, besides flipping the sequence, is let's adjust, in our budget actions, let's adjust what we're planning for a water rate increase. Instead of all of it January 1, let's do it in two halves, or two phases. Let's do 10% January 1. We know we'll need something towards the project. We also know that there's some inflationary costs, so let's do 10% January 1. And as we get a better knowledge about what those numbers calculate to, maybe it's 6%, maybe it's 12%, but as we learn that second half, let's do that July 1. And, you know, really try not to be increasing rates more than we need to, but certainly needing to make sure that we're able to cover costs and timing of the project. But that's really the recommendation. It's different than what we've been planning all the way up until now. It's, you know, it's sort of a 90-degree pivot, but I think it's one that makes a lot of sense for, you know, follow the funding, and let's move forward with the project that's got dollars towards it, significant dollars towards it, and make some other adjustments along the way. But with that, I can certainly take questions, but would appreciate counsel saying, hey, this is a change to the budget, this is a direction we should be going, it's a change in our communications plan, it's a change in our engineering. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. Dan, thanks so much for this information. This has always been a bit of a crapshoot for, since we've started, the dates, how long we have to do them, what order should we do them in. And staff just started, right? They started right in to figure it out, to get us a game plan, and that happened. They got us a game plan. Well, our team, well, staff kept going for money. Well, great news, we got some money. We don't have exacts, but we know where it's linked, and it's linked in the area specifically. That is why you're stating the recommendation is to move to the centrally-located plant instead, since we don't have a specific spot at this point, I'll just kind of refer to it as the centrally-located. I think what you're saying is exactly what we want to do. None of us want to raise rates. It's hard to bring them back down, right? So I really respect your idea of the 10%. We know we're going to need money. They're not paying for the whole thing. So we know something has to happen. But then that gives us the time, as you're stating, for staff to come in with all of the plans and everything that needs to happen, and then we find out how much money we're getting. I love this idea. I think, I don't know if you're looking for a motion or anything, but obviously, this is something we check in on the last meeting of every month. You bring us up to date, as well as the community, with where we're at. And I don't know, because I feel like you just keep burying the lead by, when you're like, well, we got some significant funding. That's huge. And he did the same thing to us a week or two ago when we were told about this. He's just having a normal conversation and then mentions, yeah, and then we got some significant funding, and it's like, wait, what? So for everyone to understand, everyone's like, well, why aren't you suing 3M? Why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? So much is happening that the community just doesn't know about in regards to what our staff is doing, and they're working tirelessly at this. And they found a link through our, we had hired a firm, and we found a link to that directly connected to 3M, hence the significant funding. So I think I speak on behalf of everyone when I say, the community is concerned about this. The council takes it very seriously. The staff has been phenomenal. And Dan, everything you suggested, I think that's what we're looking to do. Do the 10% for now, let's get things going. Everyone doesn't have to panic. I don't know about everyone else. I'm worried about increases also, right? My taxes went up, my insurance went up. Everything's going to cost more money, so thank you very much for thinking, right? Big picture. What can we do? That's not to say it's going to stay at 10 and that's it. There may be, most likely will be, a need for additional increase at some time, but this is a nice, I think this is a nice, I don't want to say olive branch, because we're not in a war or anything, but I think it just, it's going to sit well with the community, as far as I'm concerned. So Dan, and the rest of the team, because I know you're not doing this alone, but congr- I mean, seriously, you guys have been so phenomenal, and I just wish that the community understood how much has been put into this. So thank you so much, and I support what you said. Again, I don't think you're looking for a motion, or?
Yes, we are.
You are?
Motion would be great, otherwise enough conversation consensus, so that suddenly the.
Enough conversation consensus, so suddenly the budget proposal in a couple of weeks is different. Where did this come from? It's known that it wasn't just well-meant by staff, but was supported by council. Motion would be great, but at minimum, it's a discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, this is great news. It is just a work in progress and a constant evolution of process, right? And I want to highlight one thing that Councilmember Leifeld said. So much is happening. It's not that anyone is keeping information from the public. This is all very important information for our community to have, and we're open about it, and we're happy to discuss it. It is constantly evolving, and we're constantly learning new information and growing in where we're going to be able to invest, and how we're going to be able to invest in these mitigation systems. So I wanted to make sure to be clear that we are being as transparent as we possibly can with this information, because it is so critical. And I do understand not overemphasizing the small successes we're finding, because we still have to invest so much money to clean our water. So while it is a big, exciting moment that we're seeing progress, it is still a very significant lift for the city. I'm very supportive of this switcheroo, and I think that, what I like the most about it is that it highlights how agile government can be. That's something that we don't often get to tote, and we're trying to do the best for our community, by our community, and sometimes that means reorganizing and diverting and changing plans. So I really support this moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Pimble.
I think this is, you know, something that's really evolving in the system of how all of this is transpiring. We're like 20-some communities around the area that have these issues. And, you know, we're close to being shovel-ready on a lot of things, but with adjusting from the eastern to the northern site takes a little more work, and our engineering group needs more time. And I wholeheartedly support this. I think the other aspect is, you know, yep, 37% increase in your water rates is kind of tough to bite, but you look at it and say, okay, it's going to go up. But if we say, here, it's 10% now at the first of the year, and something around that going forward. going forward, or if we find more funds that we, you know, can keep that from rising so drastically and so soon, I wholeheartedly support, and I will make that motion to go ahead and have the city administrator and staff move towards an adoption of changing which site is preferential to start with.
Councilmember Lyfeld made the first, you'll second it.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, you're good. All right. Any other discussion? Yeah, great news all the time. It's usually the first of the month, Councilmember Lyfeld, that PFAS is brought up, but you know what? If he wants to bring an update each week, each time we meet, we'll gladly take it. So, with that motion in place, I would, all those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. Great, great work, Dan, staff, everyone. Dan will also give us an employee recognition, safety, and wellness policy update, and we will change that to. Kelly will do it, our city administrator, Assistant Assistant Administrator. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, Mary.
That Dan shouldn't be able to talk all the time, right?
Sorry to throw you off. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm coming before you to talk about employee recognition, a nice segue from the conversation that we just had about PFAS, right? And the hard work that folks have done around here. As you know, we do have a tremendous resource, a number of resources in the city, but none probably greater than our human resource and our employees in the city. So, that's what we're here to talk about just a little bit, ever so briefly, this evening. The city established a program to support employee recognition quite a few years ago, and the most recent was in 2009. And this focused on the longevity and focused on service awards. So, those two pieces were forwarded to council at that time. State statute allows for cities to establish a program of preventative health and employee recognition services for its employees, and may expend funds to support those programs. So, before you this evening is a policy update, an expanded list of objectives for this particular policy. So, we're expanding the objectives a bit, because we know employee recognition and preventative health really has kind of exploded in the last few years, right? It means a lot more things than it might have meant 15 years ago when the last look at this particular policy was had. So, we have a defined purpose. We have objectives which are listed here. I'm not gonna read all of them to you, but it's really looking at awareness of resources among our employees. We want to attract and retain employees through engagement, promote safe work behaviors, and reduce healthcare costs, and then share that recognition across the city to build, continue to build employee connections and engagement across the city. In August, the Administration Committee did meet to review the objectives, the overall objectives of this policy, and I'd like to point out that a fair bit of our conversation was on the attracting and retaining employees, which I think, as we know with recent, the last couple of years, that has become a high priority with us as well as across the country. And so, when we lose somebody, there's obviously a very high cost in replacing them. Some of those are real dollars, and some of those are perceived dollars. So, it's really important that we can continue to engage and support our high performers here at the city. So, just a high-level review of some of the things that are in this particular policy, certainly employee recognition, and that includes service awards, and those are at five-year increments. But we also want to support and recognize our new hires, especially when they achieve getting through our probationary process. We want to certainly recognize promotions, and we've brought those folks to you to celebrate the fact that they are not only with us, but then they're advancing their career with us. We do have an annual recognition lunch where we honor our employees each year. We have departmental recognitions that might vary across the city. We honor folks when they retire or leave service with the city, and we do some volunteer recognition, but I'd like to grow that just a little bit across the city. We have an increasing number of volunteers that work with us, and they certainly deserve a lot of recognition. In addition to this, we also have safety program, materials, resources. This is continuing, but kind of taking on a new life in the last year, as well as wellness activities. I want to note, budget-wise, there are some expenses to some of these things, but not everything, and many of these expenses are already included in the 2025 budget proposal. But in the past, we've had funds through our healthcare dollars, and those are funds that come back to us from the consortium that we pay, that we're a part of for our healthcare programs. Those funds have been relatively flexible in the past and have supported a lot of our activities and continue to support many of our wellness-related activities. But the one thing they're no longer supporting is food. We can't buy food with those dollars. I've experienced that before in other places. It happens. And so, that is one change that the city then would be responsible for, would be the employee recognition event, the annual event. And so, that will be, that's something that I've put in the 2025 budget. So, those are some of the highlights for the employee recognition and preventative health program, supported by state statute and our historic activities here at the city. So, I am happy to take any questions that you have at this point about the policy.
Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion, council? Councilmember House.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to bring up, I know when we had talked about this in the Administration Committee, we had discussed how important it is for, important it is for us to continue making sure that our employees feel valued, heard, and seen. And so, this is one of the ways that we collaborate with, to come forward and make sure that everyone is recognized and are happy where they work. I mean, I think this is a really good opportunity, as it averagely costs generally 1.5 to 2 times your salary rate to replace and not rehire someone, which is a really lot of cost. And I think that, I love the retention of our employees, and I think that we have really good staff here to continue this with, so I'm glad and hope that this moves forward.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Lyfeld?
Thanks, Your Honor. Thank you, Kelly, for this information, and we all know how important retention is, right? And Barb mentioned something earlier when she was talking about the commission, having to restart, right? When you have all-new people, how do you keep that information, right? How do you pass that information on? And so, that retention piece, having the right people in the right place, but they're healthy, right, and they're happy, and they're enjoying their jobs, it's a win-win for all of us. So, I think these are those little extras that we get to do to help build that morale in your workplace and that you have, you know, you feel valued, and I think when we're valued, we all work better anyway. So, excellent job. Is this a move forward with a policy? Do we need to? I would make a motion to approve the updated employee recognition, safety, and wellness policy as presented tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Lyfeld. And Councilmember Fox has a second. New discussion, council? I'll just say too, Kelly, I appreciate it. I know, I know the employees appreciate it too. They feel, they feel like they're more appreciated throughout council, staff, and each other. I see it at the appreciation, you know, holiday get-together, and they feel like they got something, right? And the crowds have grown in the past couple of years, and I hope to continue to see that growth, and building those partnerships within their departments and other departments too, I think is really important for city staff. So, first and second motion are on the table. I would, let's see, where am I at? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, Kelly. Councilmembers, any announcements? Okay, I do have a few. Friends of Pleasant Hill Library Hostets, used book sale this Thursday to Sunday, October 24th to the 27th. Hastings Police Department joins more than 50 agencies across the state in selling pink patch items to raise awareness and funds for the American Cancer Society during Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. The Hastings Community Halloween Party is Friday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the high school. Recommended for all families, kids 12 and under. Please bring a non-perishable food item for the Hastings Family Service, or cash, or check donation for the Youth Impact Council Scholarship. Sponsored by Mid Country Bank, Intech Plastics, Dakota Electric Association, Huffman and McNamara, Hastings Fire Relief Association, Rivertown Lions Club, Hastings Networking Group, and Treasure Island. The Hastings Downtown Business Association presents the Downtown Hastings Halloween Candy Crawl on Sunday, October 27th. Please bring a personal care item to donate to Hastings Family Service. Residents can drop off their pumpkins at Dakota County Highway Shop in the labeled bins Saturday and Sunday, November 2nd and 3rd. Painted pumpkins and pumpkins with excessive wax or another inorganic residue cannot be accepted and should go in the trash. Please do not put anything other than the pumpkins or gourds in the container. I'd like to recognize the upcoming, coming up, October 28th is National First Responder Day, and thank all of our first responders for their service in the community. We have a birthday in the house today, Councilmember Don Marie Verachoff. Happy 25th birthday again. 7:00 on Monday, October 28th is the Public Safety Committee meeting. 7:00 is the Planning Commission meeting. Monday, November 4th is a 7:00 PM city council regular meeting. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Pimble and Councilmember Lawrence. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye. Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you.